Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 18th, 2019 Board of Education meeting. The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 PM for reasons listed on the agenda. We have six Board members present and one absent. At this time, if you would please stand and join me at the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, tonight we have some recognitions. So, the first one on the agenda is Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America. So, if you would come up and stand in the middle here. Good evening, I'm Wendy Albert. If we could have our FCLA students come on down. I'd like to thank the School Board and Superintendent Moyer for the opportunity to honor our FCLA state competitors today. Thank you as well to our parents who've supported our students throughout the school year, our York administration, Erin Deluga, and as the Family and Consumer Science teachers who've assisted as well. We have Ms. Lori Christ, who is here this evening, is one of our advisors. Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America is comprised of over 160,000 students enrolled in Family and Consumer Science classes across the country. Students in FCLA can compete in many different competitions specific to their career area of interest. Students extend their learning beyond the classroom by competing in competitions that align with the FCS career pathways offered at York, including Culinary Arts and Hospitality Management, Early Childhood and Education, Fashion Design, and Interior Design. This year, we had one of our largest groups compete. We actually had 41 students go down to state with us. Unfortunately, they couldn't all be here with us this evening due to some summer commitments. But, we had one of our largest groups ever compete, and the students brought home an amazing 19 gold medals, 21 silver medals, and two bronze medals. The students' names, competitions, and medal status will all be read in the official proclamation. But, I would like to take a moment to recognize some of our students who did earn special distinctions and our students who advanced to Nationals. We had three students, in addition to their medal, who received the Most Outstanding Distinction. This is awarded to the student with the top competition project in their category. We had Yusra Haswari for Fashion Apparel Construction, Kayla Tijunji for Children's Literature Presentation, and Elizabeth Greivy for Pastry Arts Cookie Decorating. Students who participate in national star events and place in the top two at the state event, or in the case of Culinary Arts, the top three, qualify to advance to the national competition level. Our national delegates are Sam Phillips, Jacob Wilson, Patrick Reising, Brooke Johnson, and Maggie Quick. Sam and Jacob will be competing as part of the three-member Illinois Culinary Arts Team with a member from Niles North. Patrick will be competing in Food Innovations, and Brooke will be competing in Interior Design at our national competition, which is coming up in Anaheim, California, June 29th to July 4th. So, I want to congratulate all of our students on your amazing job at State and wish best of luck to our students who are advancing to Nationals.
The opportunity to present these awards to our students is such an incredible honor. To me, it really emphasizes the beauty, the strength, of our community-school district. And this is what we're all here for, to make sure our students, and this group is an example, continue to excel in all areas, in all areas of life. So, with that, let me move to the proclamation. And I might need some help. I apologize upfront if I mispronounce anyone's name. Please know, I am so incredibly honored to be able to present this to all students. Whereas, FCLA State Leadership Conference was held in Springfield, Illinois on April 5th through 7th, 2019, and the following York Community High School students earned top positions in the competition categories as noted. Apparel Construction Gold: Jacqueline Fisher, Caitlin Guerra, Maya Anikie, Emma Baron, Yusra Haswari, Kate Schirmer. Silver: Anna Klink, Juliana Moran, and Grace Weisenmeyer. Fashion Apparel Display Gold: Lauren Hedeman, Emma Johnson, Katherine Pikaček, Gabriella Propora. Silver: Kate Larson, Delaney Tase. Career Image Gold: Gabriella Medina, Maggie Templeman. Silver: Louise Baird, Isabella Herrera. Children Literature Presentation Gold: Kendall Bolt, Kayla Tijunji. Silver: Isabella Slawinski. Culinary Arts Star Event Silver: Tabitha Lee, Savannah Nichols, Samuel Phillips, Jacob Wilson. Bronze: Joseph Cornell. Food Innovations Senior Silver: Patrick Reising. Food Production: Relish Tray Silver, Victoria Berry, Marcus Slawinski, Claire Borbeck. Interior Design Senior Star Event Gold: Brooke Johnson, Claire Bloom. Claire Bloom, Margaret Quick. Silver: Sophia Trudzewski. Pastry Arts Fondant Cakes Silver: Megan Swartz. Pastry Art Decorated Cookies Gold: Emma Shail. Chell. Elizabeth Greivy. Pastry Arts Frosted Cakes Bronze: Evelyn Hickman. Preschool Lessons Silver: Mackenzie Morris, Lily Menday. Whereas, the following students received the Most Outstanding Distinction, which denotes a top project for their categories in the state of Illinois: Yusra Haswari, Kayla Tijunji, and Elizabeth Greivy. And whereas, in addition, Savannah Nichols received a $1,500 scholarship, $1,500 scholarship, and Samuel Phillips and Jacob Wilson received $2,000 scholarships from the Culinary Institute of America. And whereas, Samuel Phillips, Jacob Wilson, Patrick Reising, Brooke Johnson, and Margaret Quick were named national delegates and qualified to advance to the National FCLA Leadership Conference in June in Anaheim, California. And whereas, these accomplishments bring pride and prestige to the York Community High School, to District 205, to our overall community, and especially to those parents, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students, their parents, and the faculty of the Family and Consumer Science Department, Wendy Albert, Jenna Kalin, Lori Christ, Lindsay Goldsmith, Sarah Merrick, and Ashley McDonough for these outstanding accomplishments. Congratulations, students. All right, now, this is the process. Everyone gets one of these. And why don't we start down there at the beginning, walk all the way around, and shake everyone's hand? If you wouldn't mind starting it off.
So, if all the students in that group would come up to the middle.
Turned it on this time. Just when you thought you'd get rid of me, huh? Well, not so fast. My name's Ken Ross, and I retired this year, but I'm still part of the program here, and we're going to be heading down to Louisville on Monday. And the other teachers are unavailable to be here tonight, so I'm it. I wanted to thank the School Board and welcome its newest members for having us here tonight to celebrate our students. Dr. Moyer, your administration, and Principal Deluga and her administration for supporting the Industrial Tech Program at York High School for all these years. It's been a great year for Skills USA. We had over 60 active student members, and over half of them qualified for state by taking a cognitive written test in February. The way Skills works is you have to take a written test, compete against kids from around the state, and then you have to go down state in April at the state level. If I say "state" one more time, just yell at me. And then, they have to apply what they know in hands-on competitions. And it is really quite the same for high school students to do that. I couldn't imagine myself doing if I was their age. But, to send over half of our students, that was pretty cool. As usual, our students performed and represented our community, District 205, and York High School in a fabulous fashion. Tonight, we're honoring, we only have two here, of six state champions. What's really cool, and I think this is, if I'm correct, this is the first time in my tenure that we've ever swept two complete competitions. We swept First, Second, and Third in Technical Drafting CAD, and we swept First, Second, and Third in Screen Print Technology. So, I usually say this when I do our presentations, that at the state level, when I hear York is coming, they usually go, "Great. There goes our medal." With us tonight, we have, well, let's mention their names. Jack Birch took third in Tech Drafting CAD, Brian Pratt took second, and Joey, in the white shirt, for those of you that have been on the Board, this is his third time taking first place in state in Tech Drafting CAD. Last year, he's gone, and he has gone to Nationals twice. This will be his third trip. Last year, he placed second in the nation in Tech Drafting CAD. So, no pressure, Joe. In Screen Printing Tech, third place was Tehran Jones Booth. Miguel Ortiz is here. Wait, Miguel. All right. I had Miguel in class, so it's actually kind of fun here. And then, in first place, we had Jeff Wasco. And again, Miguel and Joey are the only two people that were able to attend tonight due to other commitments. Well, Joey and Jeff are going to be leaving for Louisville Monday morning, this coming Monday, and compete for a week at the National Skills USA Competition. And as I mentioned before, Joey is going to compete at least back up his second place and hopefully take first, which would be very, very cool. So, I really want to congratulate our students and our staff for what they've done over the years. I did want to share one little bit of stats, because this will be the last time I'm presenting. And I've been involved with VICA or Skills since I started at York. We didn't have a chapter, and we started one back in 1995. And I figured, well, before I retire, I'm going to figure out just what the heck this all means. We've had 84 state medal champions in the last 25 years. We've had 25 bronze, 28 silver, and 31 gold medal finishes. And this is spread through automotive tech, technical and architectural drafting, graphic communications, screen printing, and principles of physics technology. So, I'm really, really proud of what we've been able to do and really back up what the district has done in getting our kids career-ready and work-ready. And our students' accomplishments and the support that we've gotten from the district has been phenomenal over the years, and that's why we, our students, do so well. So, I wanted to thank you all for having us here tonight and congratulate our student winners. Thank you.
All right, congratulations, guys, and to the other four students. And Ken, thank you for coming back. It's not going to be the same next year without you, but 25 years. It was wonderful. And so, you'll have to start volunteering for the manufacturing lab, and what they will do with state competition.
That's right, we can't wait.
All right, great. So, I have the honor to recognize you and your four peers who couldn't make it tonight. Congratulations to you. And I'll read just a portion of the proclamation and say good luck to you and have fun next week. Whereas, the following York Community High School students earned medals in the specified competition categories at the 55th Annual State Leadership Skills Conference on April 11th through 13th this year in 2019 in Springfield, Illinois. As noted, Joseph Jemenini. First place, Technical Drafting CAD. Brian Pratt, second place, Technical Drafting CAD. Jack Birch, third place, Technical Drafting CAD. Jeff Wasco, first place, Screen Printing Technology. Miguel Ortiz, second place, Screen Printing Technology. And Tarajan Jones Boone, third place, Screen Printing Technology. And whereas, these accomplishments, your accomplishments, bring pride and prestige to York Community High School, to this District 205, and to our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education and the Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to you, all of these six students, their parents, thank you, and the faculty of the Industrial Technology Department, Wendy Albert, Division Chair for Technology and Applied Arts, Ken Ross, retired department leader, Dan Calaberg, Ron Robach, and Joe Stoles, for these outstanding accomplishments. Congratulations, gentlemen, congratulations. All right, I don't know who gets what, but these are for these gentlemen, all right. So, I want to say congratulations.
This mic?
Okay. Okay. The Board will receive public comments for up to three minutes concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication, petitions, reports from citizens, or representatives of other public agencies. I have one name on the list, Ken Nordgren.
Yeah, I'll just have that matter. It's coming up later in the Board meeting.
Do you have any public comments? You will not be allowed to speak during that.
I'm owner of Trock McNeil Paving. We're here in regards to termination of our contract for work at the school district with ICI. Anyways, basically, I drafted a letter here to present to the Board. They have it over here to review our case in regards to unforeseen things that were in the contract, that in the documents that demanded us to do unreasonable, in our case, demands by ICI. So, anyways, basically, that's it. If you have a chance to review the letter, you'll understand, we understand and accept the termination and wish that we be resolved.
Would you like me to? I'm John Nordgren. I'm a son. I'm in charge of all paving operations at Trock McNeil Paving. Some of you may be aware, the bid documents for this contract stated that the schedule was for schools to be completed by a certain time and started by a certain time. We did not receive permits until Friday of last week, and were told to be onsite at all four locations by 7:00 AM Monday, or we would have termination of our contract. That is unreasonable, and it just can't happen to get all my subs, our guys mobilized, in the matter of a couple hours, to be set up for Monday. The contract, the bidding was set in a pre-construction meeting with ICI to start the two smaller schools, I forget their names, then once those are completed, to move on to the two larger ones. And then, even a couple weeks ago, when we were asking for permits, we were instructed to go ahead and start work without permits, which is illegal and we cannot do, and we refused to show up. And we never received the permits till Friday, our contract till last Friday, and any supporting documents. And we could not issue any of our certificates or bonds without any permits in hand, without any authorization to commence work. And now, they are coming after terminating our contract, which is fine. And now, they're coming after our bid bond, when there's nothing wrong with our bid. They changed the scope after the scope review, after the bidding documents were set.
That's basically all we have to say. I was going to say, like I said, our insurance and our bonding won't allow us to start on any job without permits, and permits weren't issued until Friday, so.
And I have a person on record at the city that states that we had nothing to do with the holdup of the permits as we were accused from by ICI. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Next is reports and presentations. The operational plan, Dr. Moyer and Dr. Henderson.
So, we want to talk about the operational plan a little bit, and what we're going to do tonight is just talk a little bit about the process and philosophy, so you understand why we set this up the way we did, talk about some of the key components of the plan. We won't be talking as much about the finance and facilities, because we've been talking about the master facilities plan, you know, on and on again over time. We can answer questions if you want, and the financial presentations occur regularly, and we just had one of those recently. So, we're going to focus primarily on the learning and teaching priorities and get into a little bit greater detail on that. And then, if we have comments or input or thoughts that we need to take into account, we will do that so that we can present the final draft. And our goal would be, hopefully, to have this approved at the July Board meeting. So, a little bit about the plan. This is not a traditional five-year strategic plan that starts and stops. We did that intentionally. This is more of a guide to establish our district direction, our priorities. What we would intend to do, we call it an operational plan on purpose, because we don't want the connotation of a strategic plan. We want to have the flexibility. We want it to be real to the people that are doing the work, and we want to be able to be able to make sure that it's always relevant and pertinent to the work, so that it's always, that it doesn't get dated or obsolete. So, the goal would be to review the work throughout the year, and at the end of the year, be able to verify that we've met our expected outcomes, and then renew and extend the plan, so that we always have a three-year plan in place that's guiding our work. So, Year One of the plan will always be a little bit more detailed and extensive than the other two out-years. It was designed so that the focus is on improving student learning, and that then the facilities and finance pieces support the student learning. So, they're all interrelated, but they're not, so we don't want them to be considered compartmentalized, but we do want it to be such that our vision and mission as a school district related to student growth, that all of our other operations support those priorities. This would then be a document that drives our resource allocation and our professional learning, and it will help keep us focused throughout our decision-making process as things come up throughout the year. And then, it serves also as a document where the individual school improvement plans, the individual employee goals, all of those types of things are driven by this document. The larger document is kind of the comprehensive resource that we would go back to primarily more internally as an administrative team, but also possibly as a board. But, we would have an abstract of that and a plan on a page, so that we would have more condensed information for different audiences, depending on the purpose of the communication and the needs of the people that we're working with at any given time. And so, that's kind of the, that's kind of some of the nuts and bolts of the plan itself. The various components of the plan, maybe in future years, we won't go into as much detail, but we really thought it was important that we honor the last four years of community engagement, and that we were very explicit when we put this document together to try to show the connection, that it does reflect the various values that came forward to us out of the community. The Focus 205, the Future Focus, all the different data points. We have a slide where we just remind you of some of those things. Then, we talk about some of the key opportunities and challenges primarily that are things that work that haven't currently started. So, that's, the ADK is something that's coming. We just had that presentation in May. The social-emotional wellness work that we're doing is kind of in process, and we'll be bringing some things forward to the Board soon to share some of the preliminary work that's been done, share some ideas, get some feedback, and establish a process for the year related to that. What we're going to spend most of our time on tonight are the learning and teaching priorities, as I said, and then there's also information in there on the finances and the facilities. So, that's just kind of a reminder of the extensive community engagement that has transpired. The top five came, well, the top six, actually, all six of those came out of Focus 205. The first five were related more to instruction, and then the final one related to facilities. A lot of that feedback came out of Focus 205. As you know, the all-day kindergarten... As you know, the all-day kindergarten study, the educational alignment study, the thought exchange, the phone polls, all of those different things were all a part of, of those two different phases over the last four years. So the learning and teaching priorities that Mary's gonna talk about in a little bit here are based on our vision, and so we wanted to have these slides that show you, or point out some of the words that we chose to try to express what we believe that we're all about as an organization. So the vision, all students graduate college career and life-ready, you've seen that and heard that. The mission, the belief statements that, that support the mission, and then some of our principles, where we talk about culture, where we talk about innovation and different things like that, and then some of the enabling factors that, that allow us to be successful serving our students. And we try to encapsulate that in a simple visual here. So we've got our, our vision on there, and we believe that we'll be able to demonstrate that we realize our vision if the six Cs, if students can possess proficiency in those, or graduate with proficiency in those six C areas, and we try to use the rigor and relevance framework as a tool to try to get those six Cs reflected in the daily experiences of the children. So with that, I'm gonna let Mary talk about the learning and teaching priorities, and then I'll come back a little bit later and finish up on a couple of the other elements.
Thank you. All right, good evening. I'm gonna take us back in a minute to that visual, but here you have the learning and teaching priorities. These look familiar to you, you've seen them quite a few times this year. These priorities were developed collaboratively with our administrative team last year, beginning in May, when we held our administrative retreat. In order to develop these priorities, we started with what is it we want for our students? What are the outcomes we are looking for? Our team identified those. We then started sort of a backwards walk. If that's what we want for our students, what do our teachers need to do in the classroom? We identified those practices. If we need our teachers to do that, what do our principals need to do to make that happen? And then finally, what at the district level do we need to do to support our principals and our teachers? So from that work, we identified the three learning and teaching priorities that are on this slide. So as we move into the first priority, which has helped create a shared understanding and measurement of the district vision, strategies, and priorities. That may sound like it's fairly obvious, and maybe shouldn't be a priority, but we had data that spoke to us about our vision, mission, and the level of understanding across the organization. So we really felt that it was important that we really emphasize this. So I'm gonna go back just one more slide. So you've seen this, Dr. Moyer just showed it, and you've seen it in every presentation this year that I have done, and every, every cabinet member, when they've presented to you. In addition to showing it at board meetings, it is the beginning of every presentation at late arrivals, at institute day presentations, and we walk everyone who's part of that presentation through the same thing. What's our vision? How will we know when we've gotten there? And then we go through the learning and teaching priorities. Typically, when I'm giving a presentation, or a principal's giving a presentation, or a coach, you'll see an arrow with the topic for that, that presentation, and where it connects. Again, trying to build that context, trying to build that understanding. So let's share some of the specifics and talk about a little bit of the results. So again, it really was our goal and intent that we increase the staff understanding of our vision, where we're going and how we're going to get there, and how we'll know we've achieved it. Each year, we administer a survey to our teachers, a district-wide survey with a variety of questions. One of them is, how well can you describe the district's vision for student learning? When we administered the survey in 2018 in the spring, 59% felt they could do it well or very well. When we administered it this spring, we've increased that to 75%. So our intentional efforts to build that understanding, to develop context when we're doing things, really has made an impact for our teachers. Standards-based reporting is one of the ways we are measuring our progress toward that vision. It's a consistent measure of student growth, and as the implementation becomes more refined, we will be able to look at very specific standards across different grades. It will inform us about curriculum, where we might need to shore things up, where we're really doing well with our curriculum, as well as classroom instructional practices. You can see that we implemented at K5, and we, it was our planning year for sixth grade. Another area is school improvement. You'll recall that I was here in October to present the school improvement plans, and those are another way of measuring progress toward our district vision, although these have a narrowed lens that's specific for each school. Each year, our plans have become more and more sophisticated and refined. They are living documents that guide the work of the schools. When I was here in October, I not only walked you through the process, you may recall I used Jackson Elementary School as one of the examples, and we talked through the data that Jackson had looked at. So I wanted to follow up, because I know sometimes you get a presentation at one point in the year, and you never hear back about it again. So one of the school improvement goals for Jackson was improving the student achievement in reading specifically. And for reading, in our district, we look at Fontis and Pennell as a way of measuring student growth. We monitor them three times a year. In the fall, 33% of Jackson's students were reading below grade level, and their goal was to cut that amount by 10%. So Christine Trendle, the principal at Jackson, reached out to us recently, and they blew past that goal. They not only decreased it by 10%, they decreased it by 14%. So those are percentages, those are stats, but when you really think about it, those are children. Those are more and more children who are reading at grade level, and we know that's going to help them be more successful all the way through, and help them reach that college career and life-ready. So as we move into 2019 and 20, our work that we're doing to build staff understanding of our mission, mission and vision will continue. We continue with K5 standards-based reporting to refine those standards and proficiency scales that they use. Our sixth grade will be implementing standards-based reporting. Seventh grade moves into their planning year, and the high school has a year-long plan for increased learning for their staff about effective grading practices. Our school improvement plans will continue to be refined and improved. Specifically, all of our schools will be expected, very much like you saw from Jackson, very detailed data analysis that point out the gaps. You'll recall in, in October, we talked about the fact, if you're not willing to confront it and bring it out into the open, we'll never be able to address those and tackle those. So that's an expectation for all of our schools, that they specifically outline what their achievement gaps are, and how those will be addressed in their building. Our second priority is around curriculum resources and curriculum development. This year, in science, our curriculum development team was really focused primarily at 612, with some initial work in elementary. Our social studies, CDT, worked K12, and will be doing some implementing that we will get to. For both of these, science and social studies, the focus of instruction has really shifted from a very content-driven, fact-learning, to an inquiry-based, and a problem-solving and phenomena-based. Dave Beatty was here in the spring, giving you examples of some of those phenomena that they work through now in science. We also have dual-language curriculum development going on, kindergarten and first grade, and what you'll see, what really, we have, we have done well with the launch of our dual-language program, and I really do not want to infringe too much, Arianna, but something that may not be in the presentation is that we are staying one year ahead of implementation. So for example, this spring, we hired the second-grade team. They will implement in two years, but next year, they'll have that ability to work on the curriculum, so that team is solid and in place. We did this year with first grade. So we are good and ready to go with first grade. As we move into, and then the last part is deepen our understanding of our leaders, of what rigor looks like through our instructional rounds practice. So as we move into next year, our K5 CDT actually began last week with several days of learning. We have units being piloted and refined at grades six through 12. Social studies curriculum is implemented at grade six and in the high school, while our elementary, as you will recall when I was here in March, are refocusing and retooling to really look at how we can capitalize on a multidisciplinary, integrated approach to those areas. Our instructional rounds process will continue to build coherence across the district. One of the real benefits of instructional rounds is that we have leaders in different small groups going through each other's buildings, calibrating practice, so that we are consistent across the system of what our expectations are in terms of classroom instruction. And then finally, our last, our third priority is about the instructional strategies that are aligned to rigor and relevance, and the six Cs. So this year, the workshop model of instruction is a means of addressing individual student needs. It allows teachers to break down that instruction and target either in small groups or one-on-one what students need. At the elementary schools, we are in year three of that instructional practice in literacy. Okay? And then we'll be moving, moving that on up the trajectory of grades. Guided math at targeted sites. Teachers at Fisher, and our sixth-grade math teachers at all of our middle schools, participated in year-long professional learning devoted to guided math and the math workshop model. We'll see that work expand to all of our elementary schools, as well as seventh grade. Professional learning communities, we've referenced this many, many times, it is one of the most, if not the most, effective ways of improving classroom instruction. Teachers are examining student work, they're looking at assessment data, and then using that information to make instructional decisions for students. When you have that collaborative approach, where all the voices are at the table, building off of each other's results and experiences, we really get improved results for students. As the learning and teaching team continues to guide the work of attaining our vision, some of that is around the area of the six Cs. So a couple of months ago, we talked about the professional learning that we've done for our leaders this year, helping them understand the six Cs. Our leaders go out into their own buildings, find examples of that, bring it back, go through structured protocols to examine that. We've then developed learning targets off of those six Cs for them to take back to their buildings. As we talk about how that moves into the 1920 school year, we'll see literacy, the workshop model of, workshop model of instruction implemented at middle schools. We'll see expanded use of guided math. Our PLCs continue to be refined. We have plans to work with new PLC leaders at grades six through 12, and then our elementary schools will go through some additional training with Cindy Harrison, that our secondary schools did this year. And then finally, our learning targets that our leaders and coaches wrote this year for the six Cs will be implemented in the buildings. Okay, I'm gonna turn it back to Dr. Moyer. The finances, decision-making, staffing, and facilities.
All right, thank you very much. So that was meant to be, you know, a little bit more of a high-level overview, and so you have a lot of, a lot greater detail in the documents, and so I would encourage you to please feel free to reach out to us if you want any of those types of things clarified, if you start to dig into that a little bit more. As it comes to these, as it relates to these other areas, three years ago, I guess it was already, or nearly three years ago, we sat down and we developed some organizational goals in about four different areas, and finance was one of them, and these are the two organizational finance goals, which we have met regularly. The maintaining proper level of reserves and preserving our financial recognition status by the state, we have done. And then we talked about our resource allocation decisions, being based on research, being based on our district data, our learning and teaching priorities, and, and the focus on building capacity, and we invest a lot in professional learning in this district, and we've been fortunate to be able to do that. As it relates to finances, decision-making, staffing, and facilities, effect-size research is meta-analysis research, which means that it's a meta-analysis sourced through multiple studies. And so what we do there is take a look at, at not just individual research studies, but the collection of the data from multiple research studies, and see which different things consistently tend to have the greatest impact on student learning, and we try to base our decisions on that. And the, so things like interventions, formative assessment, those types of things that you hear us talk about, we talk about those a lot, because those are the things that have the greatest impact on learning, and, and we, so we do try to base things on research. The academic return on investment, we haven't quite gotten there yet, but we're starting that with, with the program analysis process that we started this year with special ed, and that we've done with dual language, and we took a look at interventions, but the big, the big one that, that we did was the special ed program analysis, and that was recently presented to you. But what we ultimately want to be able to do is start to tie those findings to our budget lines and our metrics, so that we really can get more precise about what, what works for what students at what cost. And we're in the beginning stages of that, but we're trying to move in that direction. The staffing issue, we put that up there, because if we're gonna have financial sustainability over time, we have to look at staffing, because 80% of our budget is the ed fund, and 80% of the ed, ed fund is salaries and benefits. So really, the vast majority of our expenditures are on people. As you can see, our staffing has gone up relatively significantly. Two main reasons for that, we have had enrollment growth, we did hire instructional coaches, and we have had to add a lot of staff in the areas of special ed and EL. But we do monitor that stuff closely, and we have been, our enrollment projections have been pretty good, pretty solid, every year, pretty accurate, and, and we monitor that closely. And then, again, I'm, the master facilities plan is a huge deal, but it just feels like that's all we've been talking about, and I just can't imagine there's much left to say. But, but of course, that's a big deal, and I'll talk about that a little bit later in my, with, with an update in my superintendent's report. I will say about the master facilities plan, though, again, we did not want that to be just about bricks and mortar. So when you think about the things that are reflected in there, space for all-day kindergarten, future-ready learning spaces, STEM opportunities for students, a lot of that, supporting our learning and teaching priorities, and reflecting a lot of the feedback that we got from the community about what they wanted to see in our schools. So, next steps. We're hoping that we will be able to get this approved in July, the budgeting cycles, the professional learning plans, and all those different things. We're really actually already very deep into that planning, and we would like to keep that process moving along. We will do a board presentation in August, where we talk about the professional learning that will support the teachers and the administrators throughout the year. The school improvement plan presentation is always in October. I know that you will see a lot of connections. We've gotten, if you heard me talk several years ago, you know that I was concerned that I don't think our process was where I wanted it to be, and I think each year, it's gotten progressively better, so I'm very proud of that, that they, that they have done good work in that area. And you'll see the relationships to these ideas. We've got the, the budget cycle that starts coming up this fall, and you're gonna start hearing some information about that real quick as well. I mean, the time just keeps moving. And then the ongoing implementation of the master plan. We did talk at our board retreat about some committee of the whole meetings, where we'll be able to process these things collectively as a group periodically throughout the year. And then, again, at the end of the year, come back and try to be able to verify to you that we did what we said we were gonna do, and talk about what we think some of the logical next steps are, so we keep this plan vibrant and meaningful to everybody. And that's our presentation. So thank you, and here we are, if you need something.
Comments?
I have one question. I see the anticipated next step, the first one, is a board approval on July 16. So are we approving, and I, what are we approving? Are we approving the priorities? Exactly what would we be approving in this operational plan?
Well, when, when I, when I was hired in 2015, we didn't have a plan, and we really didn't have a plan in place in the district for a while, and so the, the board created some KPIs, and then when I came, what we called And then when I came, what we call the learning and teaching priorities now, we, we started out calling the student achievement objectives so that we could start to get our instructional program focused and, and keep, keep that dialogue going with the board about what was going on there. But we really didn't have a comprehensive plan. And so what we wanted was a comprehensive plan that, that tied the, all of the work that's been done with the community engagement together with the facilities, with the learning and teaching priorities, so we have a comprehensive document. So really, what you would be asked to approve is to document that that is our, our plan.
Is that it? All right. Thanks. Oh, Jim.
How much is our, what percentage do you know that how much of our enrollment has grown since 2011?
I know that in the annual report, we go back before 2011, and I think we went from like 7,500 students to 8,500 students in about a 10-year period of time. But to go back to 2011, Chris, I don't know, do you have, can, do you have any easy access to something on your computer, or do I need to get that to them at a?
Otherwise, you can just get back to me. That's fine.
Okay. All right. Yeah, we'll get back.
You, Karen?
It's more of an integration piece. So we have a lot, you know, this is, this is the overall plan that hits a lot of different things, right? Learning and teaching, all the different things that we roll out with Mary Ann, with the program reviews, with each department. I know that you mentioned the KPIs. So are, I'm just trying to think of as we, as you all present throughout the year, and I know that you all are gonna put together a calendar, are you gonna then link it with the operational plan, or I guess I'm, I mean, and Mary, I like the fact that what you did with every, you articulated for us, for every meeting that you go to, you're talking to the leadership, the building leadership, and then so therefore, they can then go to their teams to say, you know, this is what we mean by the vision, this is how we're gonna get there with the mission, and then that, and, and we're doing ELA, for an example, or dual language, and this is where it fits in. And then, and then I could see like your KPIs. So this is how we're gonna measure our success, and this is, you know, this is how we perform. You used the example of Jackson and Christine, and this is what our goal is, and then this is what we've achieved this year. I guess I'm seeing that in my mind. Are you all seeing that as you present throughout the year? Not just for us as a board, but for our community, because our community is always asking, how are we doing? And the big, you know, takeaways are when we, when we implement something new and all the exciting things that we're implementing and deploying, but then they also look at the rankings. But then we also have these, you know, KPIs, or what we're doing, that we can then, you know, communicate out to our community so that they know what we're doing for our students.
So a couple of things come to mind there. The first is that in October, we, we always do the KPI report after we have the state report card, so we don't intend to change that. Each year, the KPIs may have evolved just a little bit, and, and they may, you know, continue to get tweaked just a little bit over time, but we, we will always make sure that we report out on those indicators. Mary Ann, as you know, has been doing a lot of work with the data warehouse, and I think we're gonna get, it's, as that gets more fully implemented, we're gonna have better data capabilities to be able to sift through and analyze gaps, or as we said, are now gonna become part of the school improvement plans. And other, other things like our capability of reporting out proficiency in the six Cs, which is something that I, I would like to, you know, see us continue to advance along that. So we'll always have those, those types of metrics, and I think that those are the types of things that the intent would be at, at those committee of the whole meetings, that we would be reviewing these elements of this plan, and, and people could ask questions, and we would make sure that we have information to show, you know, how we're moving along.
The only other thing I would add to that is each individual school posts their school improvement plan, so the one I shared with you that was Jackson's, that's posted on their website. So each schools is posted, and the expectation is that principals are providing two to three updates to parents throughout the year on how they're progressing.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a dual-language program update and analysis from Ms. Lemke
Good evening. I'm gonna pass around a book that one of my fabulous parents made for me that just kinda shows a little bit of a recap, and you guys can peruse this while we present, but I think seeing pictures of the kids in action is always a really good, it gives you a good idea of how, what the classroom looks like on any given day of the year. So thank you for being here tonight. My name is Arianna Leonard. I'm the Director for Language Acquisition in Learning and Teaching, and my co-presenter, Ms. Mary Ann Lemke, the Executive Director, who you all know very well. So we're gonna talk about, just give you a little bit of an update about the first year implementation of dual language and how we plan to continue to monitor and evaluate the progress of our students and how the plan is working moving forward until they graduate high school, so. So to bring the graphic back to you again, as Mary said, this is a part of all of our presentations, so in this vision does really encompass the dual-language program. We want all students to graduate college, career, and life-ready, and the dual-language program really affords the opportunity for all of our students to get there. The program itself encompasses all of the six Cs of communication, collaboration, critical thinking, character, citizenship, and creativity, and we get them there through the rigor and relevance framework by offering supports to the classroom and students from the building and district level. Our learning and teaching priorities that Dr. Henderson had just spoken to you about are to create a shared understanding and measurement of district vision, strategies, and priorities, which is where the dual-language program evaluation comes in, is in that measurement piece. The curricular resources and assessments and the content areas, as Dr. Henderson told you, we've been doing a curriculum development process for kindergarten and first grade starting last summer and all throughout the school year, and we'll continue to move that forward as the program moves up. And then the, supporting the instructional strategies aligned to the rigor and relevance framework and the six Cs, which is really what the dual program does in its entirety. So to just give you a little bit of an overview and an update of the program, we offer a two-way immersion 80/20 Spanish-English dual-language program at Conrad Fisher Elementary School. So what that means, two-way immersion means that approximately 50% of the students in the classroom are native Spanish speakers, and the other half of the classroom are native English speakers, approximately. We do have other language learners in the dual program who are learning their third language. The 80/20 means that 80% of the instruction during the day is in Spanish, the target language, and 20% in English. And that is going to be 80/20 in kindergarten and first, it'll be 70/30 in second grade, 60/40 in third, and then fourth grade all the way through 12th grade, it will be 50/50. So that's what the program model is. We currently have three classrooms at Conrad Fisher, and we pull from students from all over the district. The reason why we brought dual language to Elmhurst, aside from the fact that it's an amazing program, it is great for all students, and the research behind it is compelling, is that we've, we're phasing out our traditional transitional bilingual education program that's been housed at Conrad Fisher for years. We're phasing that out. So we are replacing our TBE program with dual language, and so we replaced the kindergarten TBE this year with dual. Next year, the TBE will be replaced with dual in first grade and so forth, moving up. So some of the things that we did this year, and we've done a lot of things this year, but I'm just gonna give you some highlights. The goal of our program is for students to become bilingual, meaning they can speak and understand two languages, biliterate, they can read and write in two languages, and then to become multicultural, to have a cultural awareness and acceptance for all students who are in the program and in the world. So part of that is reflected in our curriculum. So we went through a really extensive curriculum development process starting last summer. Our teachers went through a pretty intensive five-day bilingual summer institute, and then they went through a four-day bilingual curriculum writing workshop where they unpacked standards, they bundled standards, and then they created units of study in a curriculum map over the, over the year. So each unit is Spanish language arts integrated with science and social studies standards, as well as English language arts. So our students are learning how to read and write in Spanish and in English every day. So literacy is taught in both languages every day. So they've gone through that process of creating assessments, creating units, identifying resources, finding books, digital resources, the gamut, and we worked after school, we had probably 20 meetings after school where we would grapple with these things, and they would work through them. And our team was our dual-language teachers, the monolingual classroom teacher, instructional coaches, and reading specialists were all part of that development process. So we've completed kinder and first. Next year, kinder and first will be continuing to implement, but also revising and editing. And then second grade has already begun their curriculum development, starting in June. So they've already started for their implementation after next year. We've provided a lot of professional learning opportunities for our teachers throughout the year, and in the summer, again, those bilinguals institutes that we did over the summer, we're sending another group this summer in June. We've consulted with Karen Beeman, Amy Mosquera, and several other experts in the field and have brought them to the school and have sent teachers out to further their skills in Spanish literacy, or the bridge, or el dictado, so different types of instructional strategies for Spanish language development in literacy, but also for English language development in literacy. They are also getting all of the professional learning that we offer at the district through Reader's Workshop, Math Workshop, all of that stuff. So we've been providing professional learning opportunities for our teachers throughout the year and are going to continue to provide that support. We also have two instructional coaches at Conrad Fisher, one of which was a formal dual-language teacher, so that has also helped provide that embedded professional learning and coaching through the school, in the school day every day, and through PLCs. And then we created a dual-language parent advisory committee. Some of my members are actually here tonight, thank you for being here, which is a parent group that we meet monthly in an effort to continue to provide information to, I mean, this year, we really worked on trying to establish what it is our group is, like what's the purpose of our group, and what are our norms, and what are we going to do, and how we partner with the PTA at the school, but then also some dual-specific things with learning, and we have subcommittees where they set up social events, we do some language learning as adults with our Spanish and English-speaking families, I believe SIG1, PTA, oh, and then the program, just advertisement and PR and marketing, basically, how can we get the word out about dual? So we have a really great group of parents who have been nothing but supportive, and we're gonna continue to nourish and grow that parent group so that we can continue to move the program forward. So that's just a really brief overview of some of the things that we've done this year. I am gonna pass it, oh, and then the program participation. So we were really lucky and fortunate to have three full classrooms this year in kindergarten. When you talk to other districts who implement a dual program, that is unheard of. They maybe get one or two strands in a building. So to have three full classrooms speaks really to the dedication and commitment of our community to provide really stellar learning opportunities for our kids. So that in and of itself for year one is awesome. Year two, we're completely full. Like, I'm gonna start a waiting list if people enroll over the summer. Like, we're filled to the absolute gills. And you can kinda see in this graph, the blue is the first cohort, so who we have right now in kinder moving to first, and cohort two are the ones coming in. So you can see just kinda the number of students, the number of English learners, the number of students who are coming from schools outside of the, of the Fisher zone. So it's continuing to grow, so that's really exciting. Okay, and then I'm gonna move it over to Mary Ann, she's gonna talk a little bit about the evaluation piece.
So I have the less exciting job of telling you about how we're gonna know if the program is working, and some of the data that we have from, from this very first year of, of implementation. So obviously, the point of the evaluation is to see if we're on track in terms of our implementation and the outcomes that we'd like to, to achieve for our students. You've seen things like this before, because I, once I have a thing, I stick with that thing. And so this is the theory of action for the dual-language program, which really, again, starts with those outcomes. So what are we trying to achieve here? So those are the three things that Arianna mentioned in terms of students becoming biliterate, bilingual, bicultural, or multicultural. And then we also wanna look at their academic achievement and make sure the students are still achieving at a high academic level. And then the, the way that we get there is through the instruction that's happening in the classroom, the student work that's, that students are doing, that rigorous and relevant work. And we also wanna make sure that our, our parents and staff are feeling like, you know, things are going well, and, and they're happy with the way things are moving along, and of course, that along the way, students are making growth. So if they're not making the growth, we're never gonna get those other outcomes that we wanna see at the end of the day. So in terms of implementation, these are the questions we've laid out for our program analysis that we'll be repeating over time. And so again, we're hitting those elements of instructional practice, looking at student work, and the rigor of the student work, and then satisfaction, and what are the areas of strength and improvement, and then, you know, sort of again, that satisfaction piece, particularly from the parent point of view. So the, the two rows at the bottom are the things that we can look at during this first year. The top two rows are things that we'll be looking at as the program moves along. And so what we hear from staff and administrators that are involved with the program so far are some strengths. They have felt happy with the adaptability of the district to things that have come up that, you know, we're rolling this out for the first time, and as things have come up, I think they've been pretty happy with the adaptability and, and the sort of planning ahead in terms of staffing and, and the relationships within the building with the staff who are not necessarily dual-program implementers, but I think they've been very happy with the way that, mostly that those things have, have worked for them, and that they feel like they've been supported in terms of the resources that have been made available to them. There are, of course, things that they would like to see improve, and these are all things that Arianna's already working on in terms of the, the program planning for next year, some of which she mentioned a little bit in terms of professional learning, and some other things that we'll wanna do in, in terms of resources and other aspects of the program. We surveyed parents to ask them about their perspectives, and so you'll see the blue bars and the green bars are the agrees and disagrees with some statements that we asked them about. How, you know, they feel, do they feel welcome in the school, communication that they're receiving, do they understand the program, do they feel like they're being supported to support, supported in understanding and, you know, contributing to the program, and so on. In general, every, folks are very positive, so that's great. Some of the red bars, which are the strongly disagrees, my read of the data says that some people may have checked the wrong box because their comments are very positive, and their ratings, which is on the next slide, are also very positive. So I didn't edit the data, but just, just so you know, that, that may have happened. So bad survey design, I'll take the, take the hit for that one. So we asked them these very specific questions about their experiences, and, and these questions came from the national, you know, sort of principals for dual-language programs and how they should be, you know, done well in terms of family and community engagement. So that's where these particular elements came from. And then we just asked them overall, how satisfied are you with the dual-language program so far on a scale of one to 10? On average, everybody who answered, the average rating was a nine, so that, that's pretty good. The comments, in general, they're, they're so enthusiastic and happy about what their kids can do. I didn't bring any of the comments, I should have, but I can, I can do that another time or share them with you. And they're, they're really happy, they're just delighted with their teachers as well. They feel like they're doing a great job. There are a few comments indicating that they would like some more support and sort of recognition at the district level, and more information, especially things about making sure that, you know, websites are updated and things like that. Always room for improvement. So that was all about implementation and sort of, you know, how are things going, and how have they gone this year, and what are the kind of things we'll be looking at over time? So I wanna turn to some of the longer-term outcomes related to students becoming bilingual, biliterate, bicultural, and academic achievement. I'm not gonna read these many words to you, but I'll just say that, so what we've done is we have tried to look at students' language development in Spanish and English. and English and to set some benchmarks that we'll look at, at the kindergarten level, at third grade and at fifth grade. These are time periods when we think we can expect to see certain levels of performance from students in terms of their language development. And so that's why we want to look at those specific time points. With respect to the goal of biculturalism, so again, we're going to look at a benchmark of fifth grade and we'll ask students about their perspectives with respect to a lot of the things that we can think about that would indicate positive attitudes in that area. And then again, we'll be wanting to look at academic achievement. And so that's a time point by the end of fifth grade when we feel like we can make some fair comparisons of students to their peers and have, you know, at that point, look for the same kinds of achievements among all the students participating in the program and students not in the program. So in terms of those outcomes and what we can look at this year, it's really that first year. We actually have some initial data on whether or not students are moving in this direction and showing some growth in these areas. And so I will move on to those data. So at the beginning of the school year, this day requires us to administer an assessment of kindergarten readiness called the KIDS Assessment. And it includes measures of language development in English and Spanish. They're optional measures. We chose to administer them this year so that we could do them at the beginning and the end of the year and then have a way to look at students' language development and growth in that time period. So these are the measures. I'm not going to read every single one to you, but they're about understanding, speaking, and so on. And there's a range of performance that the state has put together, beginning from discovering all the way up to what they call integrating, which is the highest level. So these data are for our EL students. This is about English language development, and these are the four measures on the KIDS Assessment related to English language development. And so you'll see the purple, maybe you won't see, but I will tell you that the purple bars are the integrating level, which is the highest level. So what you'll see from fall to spring in each of those measures is that the integrating level and the other higher levels increase, which is, of course, what you'd want to see. And so we do feel like we're seeing good growth from our EL students in terms of their English language development. With respect to students' Spanish language skills, so this is looking at all students, this slide refers only to our EL students. So for all of our students, we see that same pattern over time from fall to spring that we're seeing increasing numbers of students developing higher levels of language proficiency in Spanish. So that was all of the data. But the more fun and interesting part will be to hear from the students themselves. So I'm going to turn it to Ariana, and she's going to introduce some video that we have of students.
Thanks. So the last week of school, we did a couple interviews with students and teachers just to kind of get their opinions on how they thought their first year of kindergarten was. But what I really like within these interviews that you can really see is that you can see the Spanish language development in some of our native English speakers. You can see the English language development in some of our English learners, Spanish speakers. And you can also see trans-linguaging in action, which is where students are pulling from their linguistic repertoire, either language and using them together because to form sentences that mean something. So you're going to get to see that too, which is really pretty representative of what you would see in a dual classroom on any given day. So I just wanted to show you, just to highlight that because it is really awesome to see what our kids are understanding and what they're producing and how their little brains are already working as bilingual, they're emergent bilingual students, so how their brains are working as emergent bilinguals. Yes?
You're learning in how many languages?
Dos.
What's great is to see how they become emergent readers, how they're reading on level, they're meaning great levels of expectations, their writing skills, expressive and receptive language has grown tremendously in comparison to the beginning of the year. They're taking risks, they're speaking in Spanish, they're communicating with each other, so there's a lot of dialogue being taken place and a lot of very authentic conversations that take place as well.
I can write.
You can write.
I can count.
What do you think is important to learn to languages?
Because we need to learn English Spanish, or English to learn more words, or to read more books.
To read more books, right? There is no language barrier, they're able to communicate and make those friendships that if they weren't in this program, they might have not had that opportunities to make.
To have more friends.
To have more friends and to be able to talk. Very good. Do you want to talk to your friends in English and Spanish? Yes. I think the biggest benefit of a dual-language program is how they help each other. They learn more from each other than they do from me. What did you learn this year?
I love being able to talk and read and write.
What did you learn?
I love being able to...
Did you talk?
Yes.
Very good, very happy.
To be kind and healthy and to be mostly reading in Spanish and English.
And do you like Spanish? Why?
Because I like it.
I think they truly embrace speaking a new language. It brings them together. And so it does really create a sense of community within the classroom environment and expands further. I'm sure when they encounter other people who are Hispanic speakers as well, so they can communicate with them and express how they feel and just communicate effectively. The support we've gotten from our parents has been great, too. I think they are a big reason as to why this program is so successful as well because they're so motivated and they're so wonderful with just the amount of support they give us as teachers as well. So it's been great.
Gracias por todos que me da todos los días. Y un palabra más difícil es libros. I love kindergarten.
What did you say in English? Spanish, what did you say?
Thank you for everything you gave me each day. My life is very hard, it's books. I love kindergarten.
And that last student is a third language learner. Her native, she speaks Polish at home. So she's learning Spanish and English at the same time, which is awesome. So thank you. Thank you so much. Watch it again. We'll post it on the website, we'll tweet it out, too, for sure.
You deserve a big thank you because you have navigated this... Yeah. But you have navigated this so well and your enthusiasm and excitement for this program, I mean, who wouldn't want to be in it with you? You just champion it so well. And so thank you. I know it's, there've been challenges and you have done them well. So thank you for that, for going above and beyond. Hang on.
No, I don't have a question. I just wanted to say thank you to the parents that are out here in the group that are supporting it. That's really critical. And thank you to the community for having this move forward and be so supportive. And we can't wait to hear what's next. Thank you.
Karen?
And I actually went to Fisher, I don't know, a month or within two months, you know, at the end of the school year, to see it, which was wonderful. I mean, the staff just, and the kids just wanted to talk about their experiences. And so this was actually perfect, you know what I mean, to see you share, you know, both of you, about what we've done because we were apprehensive in the beginning and it's, the dedication really has come through. So thank you very much. And to all the staff and to the parents who created another committee, right? You know, because I remember when BPAC was just at Conrad Fisher and, you know, it's just a wonderful community. It just really says a lot, both the staff, community, parents, everybody working together at the district office and the building level. I can't say enough of thank you to everyone.
Courtney?
Sorry, just have one follow-up. Sorry, sorry, sorry. And I am another cheerleader of this entire thing. I would be interested in, it doesn't have to be now, but just some follow-up on what the parents are saying they want in form of support. Like, what's that thing that they're looking for? And I'm sure it's more than just updating the website. There's more that they want, they want, there's meat to that. And I would be, I'd love to hear more about what they need from us to support this great program.
I'll be happy to share the comments that we got from parents. To be honest, they aren't very specific, so it may be something that we need to dig into a little bit more.
Great, thanks.
Okay, I think that's it. All right, next up, we have instructional coaching, year three outcomes, Dr. Henderson.
I'm not sure who structured the agenda, but to have to follow the kids is really unfair. However, I will...
They are really cute.
They were adorable. And it's such a point of pride, you know, leading the learning and teaching team and seeing how much Ariana's heart and soul has gone into this is just really wonderful because it's all about the kids and you see those tangible results. So thank you to the board for your support. So I am here for another point of pride. So it was probably a little bit before this meeting, three years ago, where Dr. Moyer had the opportunity to secure instructional coaching with the board's blessing. And I am here to talk about something that has made a significant difference in the learning for our students. So here we are, here's our district vision. I'm going to go a little bit speedy through that since we've gone through it a couple of times tonight. And you don't see any of the learning and teaching priorities highlighted because our instructional coaching program hits all three. Everything that our coaches do on a daily basis helps build that vision, that understanding. Our coaches serve on curriculum teams and work with all of our teachers on implementing our curriculum. And again, they support the improvement of instructional strategies. So tonight, I'm going to talk about our coaching program, where we've been, where we're going, what are some of the big celebrations, and what are our opportunities for growth as we always look to improve? So this is a slide I brought over from last year's presentation because I think it's important to always go back to why. Why do we have instructional coaching? And really, there's only one purpose for instructional coaching, and that's to improve student learning. We can love coaching, teachers can love working with coaches, but if we don't improve student learning, then it's financially not a sound decision. So it's improving student learning through the support of teachers, working with them to improve their instructional expertise. So our three, our year three outcomes are really centered around a few areas that I bolded for us. Building teacher leaders, level of implementation in terms of some of our work and priorities, purposeful use of collaborative planning time, and increased student performance. So I'm going to start with building teacher leaders, and that is not looking at our instructional coaches as teacher leaders, which they are, but it's about building teacher leaders within our, all of our schools, so other teacher leaders. So one of the ways that our coaches have supported that, along with our building principals, is really looking at the professional learning opportunities we have and differentiating those. So when I began and when our coaching program began three years ago, we saw predominantly our principals leading the professional learning. Then as coaches came on board, they, along with their principal, led the learning. So all of the teachers would be here and they would be receiving one presentation. That's not what you see in buildings anymore when you go to our late starts, when you go to institute days. You see a variety of sessions planned based on what teacher needs, what teachers need, and that is delivered by our principals, our coaches, and other teacher leaders. And the way that we've been able to promote that is by our coaches working side by side with teachers, encouraging them, supporting them, and now they in turn are able to take that facilitation of learning on. So that's been a great opportunity. We also see that at some of our institute day presentations. If you've attended our January Institute Day the last three years, it's been almost a conference format where we have teachers presenting to other teachers. This year, we had more new presenters than the two preceding years. So again, it's the establishment of a culture of learning and of being able to learn from each other and promoting that among our teachers. The next is level of implementation and purposeful planning specifically related to co-teaching, co-planning, data analysis, and collaborative planning. Co-planning and collaborative planning, there's some nuances and shades of differences, even though they sound really, really similar. When we talk about co-planning, that's typically a general education teacher and either a special education teacher, an EL teacher, or maybe a reading specialist who works side by side in a co-teaching format, and so they sit and plan the instruction together. Collaborative planning is something we see in our PLCs, where teachers are looking at student work and data and making decisions about the best way to deliver instruction. So in looking at our growth in this area, we looked, I looked at a few sources of evidence. One is a co-teaching survey that was part of the special ed program review. Part of it is a PLC continuum, which is a tool our teachers use to self-reflect and evaluate the progress they are making in their PLCs. And some of it is principal observation. So while we have seen growth in these areas, this is actually an area where we have identified as an area for growth and some specific plans I'll get into of how we're going to address and improve in this one. In terms of increased student performance, it's very difficult to tie a specific cause and effect relationship to coaching and improved student achievement. We can infer based on the work that's been done, but you can't, you can't show a very specific one-to-one correlation. So the use of the workshop model of instruction for K-5 literacy. I mentioned earlier that we are in year three. That work has really been led by our instructional coaches. They have done the lion's share of professional learning for that. That's an emphasis on tier one instruction. Tier one is instruction that all students receive in the classroom. And then also data-informed instruction. So I looked at our Fanta's and Pennell. Again, that's our measure of reading achievement and growth for our K-5 students. And then also the instructional coaching survey, which we administer to all teachers every year. So Fanta's and Pennell, one of our KPIs that we report on every year is the percentage of students who are reading on grade level at the end of third grade. Because we know if they're not reading on grade level by the end of third grade, it is very difficult to close that gap as the years go on. So last year, we had 71% of our students who are reading on grade level. We've upped that to 79% this year. So we are seeing the positive effect of using the workshop model of instruction and really focusing on tier one in the classrooms. We are seeing that that's having a positive impact on student reading achievement. The other, the instructional coaching survey, 87% of our teachers who took the survey reported either agreeing or strongly agreeing that instructional coaching has had a positive impact on their professional practice. There we go. So some of our celebrations. Last year, we had, we had a target of increasing the number of our teachers who engage with coaches five times or more per year. We asked teachers to identify how often they've interacted with a coach, whether it's only in whole-group professional learning opportunities, one time, two times, three times, or five or more. And we have had an increase of 5% in our teachers who are accessing a coach five or more times per year. That means that they are typically working with a coach in an, on an ongoing basis where the coach is coming in, visiting their classroom, giving them feedback, they set some goals with the coach, and then engage in some learning. We really worked this year with the coaches on shifting our approach. So typically, when a teacher goes to work with a coach, they will identify an area of their teacher practice that they want to work on and improve. And that's a good thing, that's a positive step. But we shifted this year. Instead of starting the conversation with what do you want to improve about your teacher practice, it has shifted to what aspect of student learning do you want to see improve? And so it's becoming shifted to being about student learning. And that way, teachers are identifying what sources of evidence will reflect that's improved student learning, and it changes the course of the conversation a little bit. It's kind of a nuanced approach, but it makes a big impact. And that's based on some of the work of Diane Sweeney, who's quite a recognized expert in coaching, and then Cindy Harrison, who also works with our instructional coaches. Another celebration is the sharing of coaching. Another celebration is the sharing of coaching and best practices at state and national conferences. Over the last year, we have had 25 different presentations by our coaches at state and national conferences. That's really tremendous when you think about, I tell the coaches all the time, we're in the toddler phase. Our program is three years old, and very quickly, our coaches have been recognized as having a great deal of expertise to share with their coaching peers. Most notably are some of the presentations by our coaches at Learning Forward, which is a national organization about staff development. Many times, it takes presenters three or four applications before they are accepted to present. And we had, Dr. Kostick, is it four presentations in December?
Three, for sure.
Three or four different presentations at Learning Forward the first time they applied to present. So, really, really, a tremendous reflection of the work that our coaches do. So, opportunities for growth. As I talked about, the student-centered coaching that will continue to be an area of emphasis for next year. As I mentioned in the co-teaching, co-planning, our work with Mrs. Lemke, Dr. Kostick, myself, our learning and teaching team, as we have worked with our principals at the middle school and the high school on co-teaching, we are honing in on a model of training the trainer. So, looking at our instructional coaches, really becoming experts in the area of co-teaching so that they can work on that job-embedded professional learning, which will support the growth and academic achievement of our students with identified special education needs, second language needs, and struggling learners in reading. Our emphasis in PLCs for our coaches will be about looking at data with structured data protocols. So, what that means, if we are bringing some student assessment results, or if we are bringing some student work, that we are using a structured guided discussion to hone in on getting deep in the data analysis. That's a new technique for teachers to be really formal and structured, but it really does help keep them very focused in looking at how does instruction improve. Another piece, our coaches identified this to me when we started looking at the survey that we give out every year and started looking at the results. They want to do, next year, when we did the survey, they want to look at having teachers identify how many years they have been in the field of teaching, in addition to the questions that we always ask. Because they are interested in seeing if there is a difference between teachers in their early career accessing coaching by choice, teachers in the midpoint of their career, teachers in the latter part of their career. So, as they think about how they can recruit new customers, they want to be able to look at where a teacher is in the stage of development of their career and see how they might target their support differently. So, again, when I think about our coaches, for them to come to me and say, this is something we're really interested in, I think just shows their dedication to their craft and how they want to continue to grow and improve. And then, I highlighted on the next two slides, just a couple of impact stories that we invited teachers to share in the survey. When you look at this, it really highlights the work that a coach does. If you look at the second sentence, "They ask me important questions that help me to think about why I am making instructional decisions and help me brainstorm alternatives when I am frustrated." That's something our coaches recognize. It's not about a coach telling you how to get better. It's about asking guiding and prompting and probing questions to dig out what teachers have inside of them all along. They've pushed me to be more creative and responsive to my students. This one really hit on so many things, it was hard to highlight. So, math workshop, really critical piece of teacher development that supports our learning and teaching priorities. Coaches are modeling, which means they're going into the classroom and teaching and modeling for them. How to implement math running records, that's a way of measuring student progress in math, so it's a form of assessment. And then, how to use that information to plan for instruction. And then finally, this teacher who shared the impact story was compelled and inspired to present on those strategies at the Institute Day with their coach. So, it hits on a lot of areas. I am so incredibly proud of this coaching program and the work that our coaches do because it's had just such a tremendous impact. When I think about the day I walked in the district three years ago and where our teachers are now, and their willingness and appreciation of the coaches, it's just really tremendous. So, I thank you so much for the support. It can be sometimes hard to see, hard to see the value. It's a lot of FTE. But it is making a tremendous difference. So, thank you very much.
I have one.
Okay.
So, do you see this as something that you, an ongoing, you know, like, we've had a lot of change, we've implemented a lot of new things. And so, the instructional coach, coaches definitely were an asset in that. Do you see moving forward, as maybe we're not doing so many things different, potentially, is there still the same value? Or could you articulate what that value is? Does it look different? Or, you know, it's not very well worded.
No, no, I can understand what you're saying. You know, as we have really overhauled all aspects of curriculum across all of our levels, as you said, there's been a lot of change. However, I do see that coaches will continue to be a very viable part of the professional learning program for our teachers. So, I'll give you an example where I said for three years, we've really focused on the literacy workshop model of instruction, a lot of dedicated time. Well, that is solid and up and running. However, we have new teachers coming all the time, or a teacher who, for some reason, may struggle. Maybe it's the needs of the learners who are in front of me for that year. Maybe it's because I'm new to a grade level. But there's always that evolving kind of profile of a teacher in a building, and not as much time will be dedicated at a late start or to formal workshop training because they've done that. So, there will always be that need to support specific teachers in a building.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Yeah, that's good. All right, thank you. We are done with reports and presentations. Move on to approval of board meeting minutes. We have approval of May 28, 2019, and June 10, 2019 minutes. Are there any changes? All right, they stand as presented? All right. B, approval of March 21, 2017, June 20, 2017, July 18, 2017, August 8, 2017, August 22, 2017, September 26, 2017, October 10, 2017, October 24, 2017, November 14, 2017, December 12, 2017, May 28, 2019, and June 10, 2019, closed session minutes. Any changes to those? Okay, they stand as presented as well. All right. Superintendent's Agenda Consent Agenda. Are there any items that a board member would like to pull? Okay, then, is there a motion?
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A through I.
Second. Okay, go ahead.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes.
Six Is, No Nays, One Absent, Motion Passes.
All right. Superintendent's Agenda Action Items. Item A, Approval of Assistant Superintendent for Learning and Leadership Development Learning and Teaching Team Lead.
Okay. So, Dr. Henderson gave her last presentation tonight. She will be moving on to assume the superintendent position at Roselle District 10. I will have a little bit of brief commentary later, but that does necessitate, I'm just trying to get you a little nervous, but that does necessitate us having to fill that position. And the recommendation is to fill that position with our current Director of Literacy, Nikki Tamaru. Nikki is the former superintendent at Hawthorne. Prior to taking that position for six years, she was at Hawthorne, will be completing her superintendent's endorsement this year. And so, is, done a great job for us, and I think has earned this position, and I am extremely comfortable recommending her for this position.
Okay, is there a motion?
Yes, I move that the Board of Education approve the reassignment of Nikki Tamaru from Director of Literacy to Assistant Superintendent for Learning and Leadership Development, Learning and Teaching Team with a base salary of $158,185 and a start date of July 1, 2019.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion, comments?
I think Nikki is a great choice. She's been here a long time. She's served us very, very well. And I want to applaud Dr. Moyer. We've had a number of internal promotions, which I think is culturally a great thing. I think there are a lot of people that want to come to Elmhurst 205 because they see exactly the dynamic that is going on here. People come here, they do a good job, there's a career here for them, they get promoted. And then, as sad as I am to see two of our assistant superintendents leave the district, they're leaving to become superintendents of other districts. Those are all the signs of a well-functioning school district. So, congratulations to all of you, and congratulations, Nikki.
Okay, go ahead.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six Is, No Nays, One Absent, Motion Passes. Congratulations.
All right. Approval of Assistant Principal for Bryan Middle School?
So, along the same lines as Jim indicated, Jason Crockett, who has been the assistant principal at Bryan Middle School for the last four years, was named the principal at the middle school in Frankfurt. The name escapes me of the school, but, so he has left us to greener pastures, I guess, if you want to look at it that way. But the recommendation that is coming forth through our process is for Tom Sheehan to be approved. Tom is currently an instructional coach at East Main 63 and has extensive special education experience in his background, and emerged through the committee process as being very highly regarded by the people who are involved in that. So, the recommendation is that we would approve Tom for that position to replace Jason.
I move that the Board of Education approve Thomas Sheehan as the Assistant Principal of Bryan Middle School with a base salary of $85,959 and a start date of August 1, 2019.
I'll second. Any comments? Okay, go ahead.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Present.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Five Is, No Nays, One Absent, The Motion Passes.
Item C, Approval of Settlement Agreement Between the Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 Board of Education and the Parents of Student A. No motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the settlement agreement and release between the Board of Education of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 and the parents of student A.
I second.
I assume no comment.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six Is, No Nays, One Absent, The Motion Passes.
Item D, Approval of State Grant Funding Comprehensive District Plan.
So, this is a requirement. ESSA is the federal program that supports the title grant funding that we get. And you also see the special education funding IDEA. There's money for, there's grant money that comes through federal sources for EL programming as well as our preschool programming. And so, the state requires us to submit the plan, and it's an annual requirement that the Board of Education has to approve that. And we, that is the money that is used to support the majority of our professional learning, and it is also used for, specifically for, obviously, in special education circumstances that's required for students that have IEPs and those programs. But Title I funding is for poverty. And so, that is a program that funds some of our ability to provide additional resources for students who would need them and might not otherwise have those opportunities. So, we would recommend that you approve that, approve the district grants.
Okay, motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the state grant funding comprehensive district plan.
I'll second. Okay, any discussion, questions? Yep, okay, go ahead.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes. Six Is, No Nays, One Absent, The Motion Passes.
Item E, Approval of Termination of Paving Contractor.
So, it is our recommendation that you terminate the contract. Chris Welton would be prepared to answer questions if you have them during the discussion of the motion, but it is our recommendation that you approve the termination of the current paving contractor.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the termination of the contract with Track McNeil Paving Company as awarded on May 14, 2019, in response to bid number 19-09, paving site concrete, and award the bid instead to Qualified Bitter All-Star Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $1,265,200.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, discussion, questions?
Yes, can we go into a summary of what has occurred and the reason for this decision?
I'm going to ask Terry to come up and address the board on this issue.
So, good evening. I appreciate the board's time tonight. So, before I start, I think a little background on public bidding would be helpful, especially for some of the newer board members. So, we do a lot of K-12 bidding, and K-12 is governed by two sets of rules. There's state statute, and there's also the school code that allow, that are required to be enforced in all public bidding situations. We go to great pains to put instructors to bidders in the bid documents and explains exactly what they Yep, okay, go ahead.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, six eyes, no nays, one absent, the motion passes. Item E, approval of termination of paving contractor.
So it is our recommendation that you terminate the contract. Chris Welton would be prepared to answer questions if you have them during the discussion of the motion, but it is our recommendation that you approve the termination of the current paving contractor.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion that the Board of Education approve the termination of the contract with Trac McNeil Paving Company as awarded on May 14, 2019 in response to bid number 19-09 paving site concrete and award the bid instead to qualified bidder All-Star Asphalt Incorporated in the amount of $1.265,200.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, discussion, questions?
Yes, can we go into a summary of what has occurred and the reason for this decision?
I'm going to ask Terry to come up and address the board on this issue.
I appreciate the board's time tonight. So before I start, I think a little background on public bidding would be helpful, especially for some of the newer board members. So we do a lot of K-12 bidding and K-12 is governed by two sets of rules. There's state statute and there's also the school code that allow, that are required to be enforced in all public bidding situations. We go to great pains to put instructors to bidders in the bid documents that explains exactly what they would need to qualify for, performance bonds, insurance and so forth and that they would need to provide in order to do the work. The contract for the work, the contract form is also included in the bid documents and the bidders are required to review that contract and understand it before they submit the bid. And when the bid is submitted, they are agreeing to that form of contract and agreed to be governed by that. What we, what we were delayed with the permits on the project, we needed permits from the city of Elmhurst, primarily because you're doing parking lots and so forth. Elmhurst had some say in how the water was managed on the project. For example, at Churchville, we had to redesign the detention area because that's what Elmhurst wanted. But the permits have nothing to do with starting the work. Right now, even if we, even if we wanted to go and start work tomorrow, we could not. We don't have an executed contract from Trac McNeil. We have no explanation as to why that contract hasn't been executed. We have no insurance from Trac McNeil. We have no explanation as to why we don't have the insurance in place. We have no performance bond from Trac McNeil. We have no explanation as to why that performance bond is in place. We have no payment bond from Trac McNeil. We have no explanation as to why that bond is not in place. The contract was awarded by the board on May 14. At that time, because the contract is contained in the bid documents, it could have secured all the insurance, the performance bonds necessary to get the work going. As it stands right now, we can't let them on the job site because they aren't prepared contractually to execute the work. We don't believe that they're going to get in a position to get the work done. We've asked for several explanations. We issued a 48-hour notice to them, asking them to comply with the contract, the first part being simply execute the contract. We still don't have it. They had Friday, they had Saturday, they had Sunday, they had Monday, they had this morning, not returned, no insurance. We can't stand before you with any degree of certainty and say that they are going to perform and execute the work in the time for opening school. That's why we're recommending termination.
Other questions? Jim?
Now, the second lowest bidder, what's the process, what is the process to get them up and going and what timeframe would you expect that in?
So I have a meeting, so the bid was divided into two phases. There are three schools and the one school Churchville. So the All-Star paving was the second little bidder on the three schools. AccuPaving was the second bidder on Churchville. They withdrew because they couldn't do the work and now we're down to All-Star. Just to be clear, it's a second and third bidder, Jim, that's all. They will be, they are coming to Elmhurst tomorrow so I can go with them over to the city to change out the name from Trac McNeil to All-Star Paving. They will bring their, they'll pay the license fee and they'll get their bond in place and we'll begin to get them in place to get started. We probably won't get started this week and apparently next week because we have to do some seminals and so forth. But they are fully committed to get going. They'll have a contract issued then electronically for signature tomorrow morning and we should have the bonds and so forth by Friday.
Does that put us in danger of not being finished by the beginning of school?
I think right, of the three, the three schools, Bryan, York and Jackson, those are smaller paving jobs and we're pretty sure we can get those done in time. But again, we can't start Bryan because Bryan has site utilities that are controlled by the asphalt contractor. Those have to be submitted, designed and approved, so we have to wait on those. Churchville is the one where we have doubt right now, primarily because it's in bad condition. We've had a lot of rain, that has been a time factor. So that, we're really going to have to monitor closely to get it done in time for start of school. So I think we're right on the cusp of if we get some really bad weather in July, if it continues to be monsoon season here in Illinois, we could have some trouble reaching the start of school. But we are going to work very diligently to get that done. The benefit to Churchill, as opposed to Bryan, which requires the site utilities to be secured, is that we have a separate site utility contractor at Churchville who's ready to go. The site utility is just, for layman's terms, that's the underground drainage that carries the water away from the site.
Okay, any, any other questions? Karen?
What do we do if it's late in start of school for Churchville?
Well, we'd have to figure out something to do with the parking. But I think at this stage, Karen, what I would envision and what we would work towards is getting the base course down that would make it drivable at that point. And we have to figure out what to do with the wearing surface and how to get the striping on as we progress into the school year. But we would push right now to get that base course in and get the parking lot serviceable for parking. We do have allowances and so forth built into the contract that would allow us to accelerate some of that work and get that done on weekends, Saturdays, or perhaps some overtime.
Yeah, Jim?
Does all that water that we've experienced compromise the long-term wearability of these parking lots?
In what way?
Just that we're, you know, paving over, you know, ground that is soaked.
So that's a good question and it's a concern of mine. If you were to, if you were to go to Churchville, there's an area in the center of the parking lot that has cracks roughly the width of my three fingers as I'm showing you right now. Could be a lot of water concentrated in there right now because it's rained so much. But all that stone and everything underneath the asphalt comes out. It's all new stone. So we're going to dig that out and if we need to, except we have allowance money in there to remediate some of that soil and so forth, so we'll be repairing that as we go through. And we have a testing service on site that will verify that the soil is going to be suitable for the new asphalt. You don't know what you don't know, right? You can't see everything. We could open it up and find some strange things. Would be the first time we found refrigerators or something like that buried in the ground. It does happen. But hopefully we won't encounter that.
Okay, anything else? Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the board's speed with this matter.
Yep. All right, if there's no other questions or comments, go ahead and call the vote.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, six eyes, no nays, one absent, the motion passes. Next up is the approval of donations for Field and York.
So tonight we have two. The first is Field, $8,000 towards a purchase, Field PTA, towards a purchase of additional recess supplies and equipment, including a Gaga ball pit with the goal of increasing student choices at recess. And then York, Elmhurst Airborne Youth Basketball, again with a donation, this time $781.65 to York Girls Basketball to be used for 20 travel bags for the varsity program and we would recommend that you accept those gifts to the district.
Okay, motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve acceptance of donations from the Field School PTA in the amount of $8,000 for recess supplies and a Gaga ball pit and from the Elmhurst Airborne Youth Basketball Program in the amount of $781.65 for travel duffel bags for the varsity girls basketball team. These donations are accepted in accordance with Policy 880, Gifts to the District.
I second.
Comments, questions? Thank you.
I'm going to ask one quick question. So there have been a lot of Gaga pits. Hypothetically, if there's a school that doesn't have one or two, do you have a plan to fit that in or make that, you know, part of the equity piece?
The answer is yes and in fact, Bev, can you, can you turn off that mic at the podium? The plan is yes and Todd is working that into the schedule of the schools that, as we do those actual playgrounds at the schools so that the principals and the people can have an opportunity to coordinate the planning.
Okay, thank you. All right.
I wanted to say thank you to the Field Elementary PTA for their generous donation to the recess items and Gaga pit. We all know how important it is for the kids to have recess and be able to socialize and get exercise. And I know firsthand that the more choices that are offered during recess on the playground, the less conflict and more fun it is for everyone. So just want to say thank you to them for their generous donation.
And I'd like to say thank you to the Airborne Program. As many of you know, I'm a big supporter of youth sports in our town and I appreciate their commitment to creating that pathway to our youth, to commitment to York High School because I think it's an important segue from the elementary and middle school years to once they get to York. So I appreciate their effort and that commitment.
Go ahead.
Mrs. Hostler?
Yes.
Mrs. Troutman?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ceforio?
Yes, six eyes, no nays, one absent, the motion passes. Superintendent's communication, facilities update.
So I would just highlight a couple of things. One is that Bev and I have been going around these past couple of weeks to local realtors and also invited some people to a session here at the district office to make sure that they're clear about the boundaries and where they can find the information on the website. We do now have an address locator posted so that people can just post their, or punch their address in and their school comes up. So those conversations have been going pretty well. We met today, as you know, the architects and construction managers meet with Todd every week, about once a month, the larger team meets and we had that meeting today and some of the focus is now shifting to the exterior of the buildings and so work is moving along. There is a meeting on July 9th at Edison that I found out about this morning, which is not listed on your table. But we're, we're the architects and we'll have a follow-up meeting at Edison with the school team at Edison to get another round of feedback on the evolution of where things are going in that building. And then we talked about a plan for when we might be ready to be able to bring this forward to the board in terms of being able to get bids out on time. And we think that that first meeting in September is when you can expect us to be coming back to you with updated information that will be a lot more specific than the general concepts that you've seen to date. So that's my information there.
Okay, York Senior Final Exam Exemption Data?
So this was the first year that we had a spring senior final exam exemption in place at York and you asked me to come back to you with some information on the number of students that were able to participate in that and give an update on how we think it went. So I'm just going to give you a couple of highlights. 94%, 94.1% of senior students qualified for an exemption from one or more tests. So some of these numbers in the larger report, you have to understand that the reason that they don't all add up to the number of seniors in the class is because we're talking about number of tests and number of classes, not just number of kids. So 509 met the criteria of C or better with eight or less absences, 52 with the criteria of D or better and five or less absences. 145 total students failed to qualify for an exemption from 373 tests. And what I am troubled by is the, what I would consider to be the excessive number of absences that we see in a lot of our students. And so I'm going to work with the administration to make sure that they, that part of our MTSS work, part of our focus on behavioral health, part of our focus on the assessment policies and other different things that are going to come out of our work next year that we try to be sensitive to how, and the feedback we get from students through these surveys and other focus groups and things like that that are going to happen, how some of these things might relate to their attendance at school. Because I, we want kids to want to come to school, to enjoy coming to school and we want them to be able to participate in the learning at the school. And it just is, that's the thing about this that's most troubling to me when I look at these numbers. But they are starting to strategize and they are taking a look at some of the subgroups of students who failed in higher percentages to qualify for these exemptions, to delve more deeply into some of the reasons why and what could be done to intervene earlier to try to be preventative in that. And then just, just an example of some numbers, I just think it's interesting, in semester one, 36 seniors who had multiple discipline or parking violations that would have disqualified them from the exemption, none of those kids had, had any, anything in the second semester. So we did have 26 kids who had an infraction in the second semester that disqualified them. But I would, I would guess, because as soon as it happened, they came begging to Ryan Doherty's office and I'm guessing that as this becomes more embedded, that some of those kids will not be doing those things. But at any rate, so those are just, that's just kind of a synopsis. I definitely think it was successful enough to continue this and they are looking at different refinements of things that have to do with how they schedule the exams or logistical things like that, as well as delving into the actual numbers.
Freedom of information, oh, sorry. Any questions?
Yes, one of the things that you talked about, Dave, was the, and I'm going to lump it under the communication process. You said, obviously, the first semester, those 36 seniors who had a violation did not repeat that, but there were 26 additional students in the second semester that had that. And this might not be information that you have available right now, but I'm wondering, can you talk about what the communication process was to those, to the entire senior population about this process going in and if there were any follow-up conversations or reminders about this, this new policy?
The, there were emails that went home to all the students and there were teachers that explained to all the students in their individual classes about the policy as well as announcements on the TV and, you know, all that kind of stuff. As far as follow-up and reminder, I don't know that I can specifically speak to that. I do know you see what some of the different things were for in that second semester. I think that, I think what I can do is I can try, I can try to go and revisit that and try to ask them to take a look at the clarity of their communication process and the frequency at which they're reminding students about it. The biggest communication issue that did occur was just, there was a lot of confusion about kids understanding what was going to be going on, on the days of the testing when they didn't have tests to take and that kind of thing. And so that's one thing for sure that, that they're going to improve upon next year. But the whole idea of the reinforcing the policy throughout the semester, I think that's a good point. I didn't necessarily talk about that with them.
Anybody else? Thanks for the update. All right, next one, Freedom of Information Act request.
So there were three, one requesting specific documents, which was granted, one requesting certain student information, which was denied, four requesting specific test scores, two which were granted, two which were denied. And then one final thing is that we do have two members of the cabinet that are leaving us for superintendent positions. I already referred to Mary, also Dr. Wall, who will be leaving to take the superintendent job at Benjamin District 25. And I just wanted to highlight just a couple of things. So Dr. Wall... So, Dr. Wall gets to do all the fun things. He gets to manage grievances. He gets to do the calendar committee. He gets to do the policy committee. And when I first got here, he was the person that was doing the committee that had to do with getting student growth into teacher evaluations. But he's negotiated, I think it was, we talked yesterday, is it six contracts over the last five years? Five contracts over the last five years. And so, I just, I want to wish him well, and I want to thank him for his contributions. And with Mary as well, when we, when I hired Mary, so in May, she referred to this tonight. So, in the May that I hired Mary, I was at a finance committee meeting, and this was literally what happened. A board member said to me, "If you had a million dollars, what would you do with it?" And it took me less than a second to say I'd hire instructional coaches. And the board liked that response, and we scheduled a learning and teaching committee meeting, and at the June board meeting, we approved instructional coaches. And Michelle Fitzgerald was working on some of the preliminary stuff, and then Mary came in about two weeks after, or a week or so after the June board meeting, and I said, "So, by August, you'll have instructional coaches up and running. And by the way, we're starting instructional rounds. You got that." And there's this thing going on called the Middle School Task Force, and that might be kind of fun as well. So, there was a lot of really, really important work that's gone on over the last, you know, three to five years since these people have been here with us in Elmhurst. And I just want to thank them and wish them well. So, thank you.
Pardon my choreography tonight. To the board, to the members, the remaining members of our audience, at every meeting, we do try to highlight some of our tweets, our social media feeds, and the different, during the summer, we're still active and still going. And the tweet of the week belongs to Stephanie DePaola, and she basically says, "Today at U-Cubed Math Camp, we discussed what we like and don't like when working in a group or with a group, and then completed building shapes, challenges, and teams." And the students got very creative, and she also at several people, says @FisherSpirit, @D205. And you also notice our repeat refrain of our hashtag. It's our grouping mechanism, so you can go to that hashtag at any point in time, see the wonderful things that are going on in our schools across social media, and you can share like to your heart's content. So, spread the word. Happy tweeting.
Thank you. Okay. Couple of board communications. First, and I, you know, think that everyone, sure, they may want to say something too, but, you know, as a board, we see the work the cabinet does, and, you know, the impact you've had on kids is amazing when I think of where things were a few years ago and the hard work that's gone into moving this district forward. And so, I just have to say thank you. So, we know it's taken going above and beyond to, you know, change things and put in place some new ideas and help them be successful and support them, and so, just thank you. And Jim, you know, it's a thankless job. But, you know, just thank you for what you do for people, because it arguably then rolls down to the kids, too. So, it's all about the kids, but you do a lot with people that goes a long way, so thank you. Anybody else agree with that? All right. So, then I have a couple of other communications. I just want to say on Monday, June 10th, 2019, the board completed a self-evaluation. And if, for those people not aware, a self-evaluation is a means by which a board, as a governance team, can step back and look at itself critically and examine its strengths and weaknesses and make plans for continuous improvement. So, we had a very productive discussion, and just want to share some structures that we believe moving forward will help us achieve the work of the board. We are only going to have two committees moving forward. We will have a policy committee, which will be chaired by Dr. Harrell, and the two other board members on the committee will be Courtney Troutman and Beth Hostler. And the other committee will be Finance and Operations, chaired by Jim Collins, with Karen Stufan and Chris Kozinski making up the rest of the committee. The board will structure its meeting schedule to allow two to three committee of the whole meetings throughout the year that will focus specifically on learning and teaching priorities. And then, lastly, the following board members will represent us on these committees and associations, and all this will be posted on the website, too. But, so the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission, I will still be the rep. The SACID, which is Special Association for Special Education, DuPage County, is Karen. The LEND Legislative Education Network of DuPage is also Karen. The IASB, which is Illinois Association of School Boards, will be Margaret. And then, internal committees for District 205, the Tech Committee Representative for the Board will be Karen. The District 205 Innovation Committee Board Representative will be Jim. The District 205 Safety Committee Board Rep will be Courtney. And we anticipate, it has not been established yet, but there will be a District 205 Umbrella Behavioral Health Committee, and when that is established, Beth and Jim will be the board representatives on that. And finally, Courtney and I will be working with Bev to continue to build our community engagement efforts and effective communication. So, I just wanted to share that with the community so you're aware and kind of have a feel for where the work will, what the work will look like for the following year. Any comments on that? Are you saying yeah, or are you just? Okay. All right. And then, lastly, I would also like to formally acknowledge that the school district, during our May 28th meeting, received a letter from the city, and tonight, at this time, the board does not have a formal response to the communications that we have received from the city. Thank you. All right. Are there any other board communications? All right. With that, we have two upcoming scheduled meetings. Tuesday, July 16th, 2019, is a regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting at 7:00 here in District 205 Center. And Tuesday, August 13th, 2019, Board of Education meeting at 7:00 here in District 205 Center. I also believe there's a Finance Committee scheduled for June 25th at 5:30 here in District 205 Center. Okay. So, with that, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.